I'll go ahead and call our May 1st, hard to believe it's already May, meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our April 3rd meeting. Do I have any corrections that need to be made? If not, I will accept a motion.
I do ask for one clarification. On page four, they were talking about the sidewalk at the Washington site. And at the bottom it said Eric suggested honeycomb pavers that the city has in stock. I want to verify that they know we are not providing those. That is an example. So I just want to make sure that that's in there. It's very last line. I just, if we want to put a clarification that the city is not going to provide those pavers, but it is the type of paver that we use in different locations.
Any other changes need to be made? In that case, I'll accept a motion to approve.
I'll immediately accept the minutes as presented.
With the one exception, with the one...
With the one exception, with the exception.
With the one addition.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I've got a motion to approve the minutes and a second with one additional note that the city's not providing the pavers. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. First item on the agenda is a, it's an informal review for Bell V property at the intersection of Bayview and Fairhope Avenue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is prompted from an MOP, a four-unit MOP application that we received. And an MOP application will stop at the planning commission, as you know. With this, and I'll go ahead and show you the property, it's one we're familiar with. We've seen an informal review of this property before that also included the property to the east. I had some of the same questions then, but we've added another flavor to this. We have a four-unit MOP for this project. I did send you an email with some of those, but some of the, the applicant does have a chance to correct some of the plans or revise those. So I'm not really here to discuss the project as much as I am the request for an administratively approved replat and how that affects the property. I will show you how that could potentially impact his application that we will, we will hear in June. The property on the right, there's an historic home, this is on the corner of North Bayview Avenue and Fairhope Avenue, so right across from, from the park. This was a platted lots from 20s, I believe, and it contains two historic lots of record. They've been used as one piece of property since the inception, and it's the house that stands on the property, as you see today. Setbacks, this property is on B3B, so that's where we want tourism, resort rentals, you know, things that help support the tourism and the CBD, but not the commercial components of that. Setbacks are shown, so I want to note why it's in red. In B3B, there are no side setbacks, just front and rear setbacks. Nor is there a street side setbacks for those properties on a corner lot. The applicant did want to develop three condo, four condo lots to be used as single-family each one. They could be, based on the zoning, be used for short-term rental, but would be to build four single-family homes. The existing setbacks on this property, you've got two lots fronting North Bayview. So in that teal color, you've got 20-foot setbacks. Remember, there's no side setbacks or street side setbacks. However, along Fairhope Avenue, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer that's required by the tree ordinance.
Who owns that buffer?
That is, property owners own it. It's kind of like an easement. It's a, or a setback. It is owned by the property owner.
Okay.
But what they can do with that is dictated by our codes and regulations. And I will, so, so the, one request aside from the MOP is a request for administrative replat that will combine the two lots into one. And this is where it gets a little unique. Our zoning ordinance refers to frontages based on dimensions. Shortest dimensional frontage is the front, and then all other setbacks and definitions follow. The resulting lot would be exactly 132 by 132. There, our zoning ordinance doesn't really guide us there. The applicant would like the result, as you see on the screen. Frontage on Fairhope Avenue and the rear setbacks on the north side of the property, which is kind of the inverse of what's there today, but also clears that 25 feet on the North Bayview side. Definitions of frontage, as I said, on a corner, it's the shortest lot line abutting a street. This is 132 by 132. And the side is whichever frontage is not the shortest is the street side or the side lot line. There's nothing in the zoning warrants to say what to do in this situation. So I'm here in front of you to let, what, what do we do when we run into this situation? I've looked back in the past and there was an interpretation that it has two frontages, so 20 feet on each side. However, you look at a definition of rear yard, and it said on all corner lots, the rear yard shall be opposite end of the lot from the front. So I think it's a little too much to say we're going to have two frontages and two rears. That's too much of a burden. So initially, we were looking at this as staff, and we could just deny the replat, and it stays the same. Two lots fronting North Bayview. But this solution, you know, kind of made logical sense when we just took into what have we done in the past and, and, but this has a, this has a crippling effect on this existing property. So we've overlaid this with the, the plan as proposed, and that front setback on Bayview, as you can see, kind of cuts into the, one of the, the unit. So there's the...
Well, that's one of the prospective units, not what's there now.
Yes. That is the, I mean, in essence, if, if we're going to say 20 feet is what it should be, that's in a replat. That has nothing to do with this project.
Now, if he combines the two lots into one with the way the building is currently, the way the property's currently formatted, would that meet the setbacks?
It, the, the house right now, it would with the, with the setbacks as, as we're I'd have to look at the, if this building is, but it would be a legal nonconforming. So if it ever, potentially, this might be above, over the 20 feet a little bit.
I mean, to me and, and, you know, other folks on the commission, I'm just kind of shooting from my hip. And if, if you think that what I say is crazy, let me know, and I'll rethink it. But to me, if we look at it like as it is right now, I mean, we've got a precedent of generally allowing people to combine, you know, lots going from two to one. Now, you know, we're thinking ahead of ourselves that eventually, he's currently saying he wants to go to four, but I think the going from two to one, I don't see any issue with that. I don't think that that means that because we go from the two to one that we're, I don't think that that should mean that we, you know, are agreeing to his next round of what he comes up for.
Right.
But going from two lots to one, I mean, normally, we do that just carte blanche, you know?
Yeah. And we do, and we've had, I can think of, it's actually a B3B on Ingleside and Nichols. And to, as part of that zoning, we did a replat. But what we asked for there, those had some historically platted setback lines, and we asked them to honor that on the, and they agreed to do that.
We did it in the central business district for the bank up there, that citizens.
Yep.
Bank.
Yeah.
We've done it on a couple of those little lots over where John Batte built that last building in the CBD.
Mm-hmm.
Where we've combined lots.
And I think the replat gives us some, you know, negotiating ability to, to create those setbacks. It's an administratively approved, so I'm kind of here asking for some advice because, you know, there, there's two sides. I don't necessarily want to make this interpretation to kill a project. That's not what we're here for. Because the way I look at this, this project, even if we do the replat, may go away, and we see something else that, that comes in in its place, and instead of four units that are 30-foot tall, we're, we're getting a request that fills out every square inch. So I'm, I want to, you know, kind of separate the two things and kind of hear some opinions here on, on thoughts. Because this, you know, a lot of times, we have to lean on that, the ordinances and how to interpret something. There's no guidance, so.
Just, anybody else have any thoughts?
Just drainage. That seems to be a big concern with that, that footprint right there that goes, not that that, we're there yet, but...
And we'll certainly review the drainage, you know. I'll tell, I mean, I'm kind of here in the, in the applicant's, you know, I don't want him to move forward. If we have some drainage questions that were reviewed during MOP.
Right.
And we want some revisions, he's going to have to go pay for an engineer on that. Well, if we know these setbacks are what we want to see in the replat, but I don't want him to have to go spend that money to do that when it's, you know, a non-starter. So we will certainly be looking at, in the MOP, this is more about the administrative replat and how it affects the setbacks.
So the proposed buildings are rear-loaded, the, the access is going to come off of Bayview?
Yes.
Any reason that we might lose any of the parallel parking spots on Fairhope Avenue?
No.
Okay.
The, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to every plan. I think one of the biggest pros of this plan is it's rear-loaded.
Okay.
And, and does use that rear area, so, so the rear setback there makes a lot of sense. We don't have four, you know, driveways on Fairhope Avenue.
Is this, this request and/or approval, is it binding just to this project, or does it go with the land period?
If, if I sign that replat, it's recorded and it goes with the land.
Okay.
So I do not intend to sign that replat until we get through this review.
Okay.
But if we're, that's kind of why I'm here. If we all kind of know this is what the right answer is, let's not put an applicant through, you know, all the, getting a MOP approval and then saying, nay, we're not going to give you the setbacks you need to make it happen.
Okay.
Let me ask a question about the side, side yard setback. I mean, they've got a three-foot setback on the, on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
The zoning ordinance says that it's 10 feet if there's residents next to it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a residence next to it or?
No, it's, it's parkland.
To the north.
I mean...
To the north, there is residence.
So what we look at...
Not only about to the east, there's going up, going up...
Yeah, but that's just park.
So, and there's some, there's some historic precedent for this statement. We actually got sued on something. We had, we've been consistent throughout. The, it's about the zoning district, not how the property is being used.
So that's not, that's not the way the rest, the way the, or...
There's a little clarity, but yes. If somebody comes in and builds a residential home on a commercially-zoned property, tomorrow they can walk out and put a shackle up for a law or a, a commercial use. So it's about the zoning when we look at buffers and setbacks. And on both sides of this property, it is also on B3B.
Right. Well, unbelievable.
Yeah. Now, so, and now, I think currently, both of those are, properties are being used as homes. But, but again, they can turn them into short-term rentals tomorrow. That's an allowance based on that, which is a commercial.
You know, Hunter, I'm real, I feel very, very comfortable taking this from two lots to one. But I don't know how comfortable I feel, you know, agreeing with that tonight that this is necessarily be the front and rear setback. I mean, I don't see any real issues, but until you give us a staff recommendation on that and we kind of look at it and see it and the ramifications, I mean, I don't know, you know? And it's kind of like you said, if we combine these two lots into one lot, I mean, the way interest rates are and construction costs, I mean, you know, this developer could change his mind and, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Gottbux can come in and put a single house there. Or somebody else might come in and want to put a hotel there. I mean, there's just no, no telling. So, I mean, to me, it's almost like two extra, you know, two separate decisions, you know?
It is.
And as far as the decision of your administratively signing to combine, you know, two lots to one, I think that's totally in your discretion and something we have always done, never questioned.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah.
And I don't see an issue with that. But I don't think we need to say that that, you know, I mean, but I think that you could then tell the developer, you know, hey, if you want to do it, here's kind of the pros and cons. I don't think that should, you know, set us toward any direction of voting in the future.
Right. And that, you know, that replat process gives me the authority to do that, but it's not a demand. So I think if somebody's recourse, you know, if they don't like my interpretation, I think they come back. At least in the past, there's been some cases for, for replats coming to planning commission.
Right.
When they didn't like staff's interpretation. So it might wind back up with you if, if this is the route we, we go.
Or the boarding, Board of Adjustment, eventually, depending on what they're appealing or asking for.
Yeah.
Because I'd hate to at some point see this subdivided where you have, somebody wants three or four curb cuts right there through, you know, that area of Fairhope Avenue with that elevation there.
Yeah.
And curb and sidewalk, that would be, you know, bad news.
Yeah. And there's, there's some other things. There is some historic trees on the property that are protected. Staff has said you keep them, but applicant is going to appeal that to the tree committee. I, I don't even know when that meeting is at this time. So there'll be some things to work through, but, and unfortunately, it's not big enough for something like a PUD where we can tie the replat to it and do setbacks. So kind of too independent process. But if, if y'all don't have any other comments, I think we can move forward with the rest of the agenda.
Anybody else have anything else to add for the good of the order at this time?
All right. Thank you, Hunter. All right. Next item on the agenda, encounter development, Wawa.
Thank you. This is part one of the Jade Show tonight, which are here, so. Okay, so this is a request from Jade Consulting on behalf of the owner and counter development, which you guys saw last month, the whole big enchilada, for the site plan approval for the Wawa. They're both here, trade gen rights behind me. So the subject property is owned B2, general business district, and consists of approximately 2.73 acres. And it's located on the northeast corner of Alabama State Highways 104 and 181. If you recall from last month, it's actually lot one of the big subdivision. We have already reviewed the details of the major subdivision, as you guys have, and this is the only site within that encounter, commercial retail development, that has direct ingress to both highways 104 and 181. There you go. That's what it looks like. I'm sure you're familiar. And that's what the Wawa will look like. That's the front. Site plan. Aerial said site plan. That's lot one. Okay, so B2 does not have side setbacks, and this is a corner lot. So it has, and it fronts those two highways, so there's construction setbacks, and there, the construction setback on Highway 181 is 125 feet. I'm sorry, yeah, it's 100 long, 181, and then 100 long Highway 104. And as is, they accomplish the required 20-foot green space buffers along the highways. Aldot has been kind of persnickety about putting stuff in their highway setbacks, but the applicants do have an email confirmation from Aldot that says they could put the green space buffer there along 181. So there are 20 set foot setbacks facing the interior roads, which are in Counter Drive and Bushel Drive. And the buildings, which would be the store itself and the gas canopy, they meet the high restriction of B2, and the materials are primarily brick, metal roof, and overhangs and cement. There's kind of the color scheme right there, too. So as you can see from that aerial, there weren't a lot of trees, so the tree preservation plan was kind of a moot point. But they did have a very extensive landscaping plan, about 20-something sheets. The planning strip facing 104 provides for required perimeter trees, but we're going to kind of go back and look at the spacing, because they're not spread, they're, they're not, they need to be spread out less to cover the intention of the ordinance. So the screening vegetation around the dumpster might be really looked at again, too, because what they had as proposed species doesn't really grow that tall to screen the said dumpster. However, there is a dumpster screening, and that's what it looks like right here. It has a nine-foot tall meadow and stucco enclosure, so, but we'll just look at it again with them. The mechanical equipment has been finalized, reviews accepted, and all appear on the site plan, and there are not any proposed fences. So this is a landscape. It's not a colored one, but you can see there's lots of trees planted in the perimeter around.
Michelle, where you have that, you know, the spacing...
Yes.
You know, 30-foot on center spacing for the trees, and, and the intent of that is to hide signs and buildings from the road. And the spacing there, it's just at the corners, it, they kind of opened it up so you get a good view of the signage, you know? Very minor thing, but, and we are waiting those revisions.
You can kind of see, this is pale green, but that's the green space buffer along the If you guys, you did see the big encounter development that had interior sidewalks and also has a trail. So this site plan includes interior sidewalks on the site, and also has an eight-foot sidewalk directly outside of the actual store. And it provides for full vehicular access off of Encounter Drive and Bushel Drive. The sidewalks are situated at the perimeter along Bushel Drive and Encounter Drive, and it also has the 12-foot wide multi-use trail, which is throughout the larger development. This one, the multi-use trail appears within the highway construction setback along Highway 104, and then extends across Bushel Drive to connect with the greater trail system for the development. And the applicant has provided ADA-approved crosswalks across the ingress and egress points. And with some probing, we've asked Aldot about connectivity and rights of way pedestrian connectivity, and right now, that doesn't seem to be a go. So the parking meets the zoning ordinance as well, the perimeter landscaping screening requirements of the tree ordinance. The parking originally had more than 50 parking spaces, which would require some other things, but we, they went back and looked at it and got it down to what it needed to be. The number of spaces were reduced to 49 as opposed to 55. With over 50 parking spaces, the light poles can be 20 feet. However, if you have less than, it limits the light poles in the parking lots with 50 or fewer spaces to 10 feet overall height. And I actually did find the photometric plan, so that's, it was actually submitted with encounter. However, we'll still have to look at it again because of the light pole difference, because of the parking being revised.
So what, what does that mean? What's height are we going to have the light poles?
So, and that's something, you know, we may want to talk about. The requirement is if you're 50 or more, you get to do 20-foot tall poles. They're 49, so that requires 10-foot poles. Just means more poles to space it out and get the same lighting. I don't know if you have the flexibility to, to do anything about that, or if we have to go to...
I think you'd rather do 10-foot, wouldn't you, to keep the...
That's a zoning ordinance, so we...
Yeah.
To keep it low. Yeah, I wouldn't want to do anything about that.
Okay, stormwater ad nauseam last time, so, but it drains single primary direction west and, west to east, upper tributary of Pensacola Branch, and it's designed to be collected by a series of inlets routed through a storm pipe network to a single wet detention pond, which is on that giant lot 13. If lot 13 had a resident developed, they'll have to revisit the storm plans. An erosion control plan was submitted, and it was okay. So the sign plan considerably exceeded what's allowed, and they're going back to the corporate headquarters to work on that and present something else. So it will have to be in accordance with the sign ordinance before it goes further. Utility plan, utility plan was submitted. It's been reviewed and approved. ADA requirements have been met, and there was an extensive traffic study done in affiliation with the Rockrail Development to the north. There's an existing traffic light on 104 and 181, and there's ride-in, ride-out driveways onto northbound Highway 181 and eastbound Highway 104. So our recommendation is the landscape plan shall be revisited pursuant to this report and the tree ordinance prior to submission to the city council. A different photometric plan be submitted and approved prior to applying for a building permit, and then revised signage plan needs to conform to the sign ordinance.
And those things are underway, but we, we'll need to see those revised plans, and if there's anything you add, changes you want to add before we'll, we'll send it forward.
Now, the 20 feet that they are required to landscape, that's right-of-way on their own property, correct?
Yes. Where we run into some conflicts, we have not allowed green space, not the intent of the buffer to remain in a highway construction setback. There's an argument whether it applies here or not, the highway construction setback at all. But we did speak with Aldot and did confirm what was told to us. Aldot knows kind of what the plans are for 181 right there, and, and has no intentions of taking anymore, so they're okay with that buffer and the trees being on that first 20 feet of property. They don't intend to take any further land. Not take, but acquire.
Acquire.
Because I thought, I thought we were trying to get that 20-foot in addition, too.
If there's, if it's unknown, and especially when it was unzoned, when we were dealing with a lot of the unzone outside the city limits, where under state code, the highway construction does apply, we, we never could have the comfort level where that ultimately road would be and all that, so we were. But I think in this case, we know where everything is going to be long-term.
Doesn't it take the, I mean, what, at some point, if, you know, if that's in the right-of-way, if somebody is worried about the, the height of the trees with power lines, and just comes in there and just bulldozes it all down?
Great question. We've spent, I've actually spent a lot of time talking to Riviera about power was moved. It actually is in the right-of-way. And where these trees are planted should never, those overhead lines should never affect the trees. But one of their, one of the things they're doing, are hoping to do, as the property's develop on Encounter Drive and Bushel, they will be in putting power underground, and hopefully, we get rid of the overhead power lines along 181 and 104 long-term. So we, we are out of the way of what's there, though, now, and those were recently moved due to the 181 construction, so they won't be moving anywhere soon. We know where they're at, and hopefully, will, will be removed altogether once this builds out.
Any other questions for staff at this time? In that case, I think I'll go ahead and trade you. I'll have anything to add at this time.
This is Paul Marcinco, Jade Consulting. I'm here to answer any questions you have tonight. I wanted to just appreciate staff for working with us. Obviously, we have these recommendations here. We're working on the landscape plan and any other recommendations you have tonight.
Okay. I've got one question. If you could just glance at this right here real quick. What is this? And if you want to show Hunter...
Gas can.
Gas can, okay.
Which one? I can show on the screen for the public meeting.
Yeah.
This? That, just this whole area here.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if that was a building. So that's the gas canopy right there, then?
Yes, sir, separate from, from the building.
Okay.
And we did review signs, that we included that in the packet, but that, that is, was significantly larger sign package than we allow, so that, that's going to have to be adjusted pretty drastically before we get to the council.
Okay. Any other questions for the presenter at this time?
Do we need to add a fourth condition of the light just for memorializing that, the light pole height? I mean, it's part of the ordinance, and candidly, the, the original parking was ugly, 56, and there's some triggers in the landscape ordinance if you're above 50. So... So the struggle to get to below fifty was, you know, a lot of work put in, and then, as we're reading those final notes, you know, we noticed the lighting, we haven't even had a chance to speak about that, but...
You think that would encompass the number-one landscape plan provisioned, or...
Not the lighting. Lighting is, I mean, it's part of the ordinance, but since we haven't discussed it, it might be wise to add a fourth condition that...
Okay.
Wouldn't the photometric plan cover that?
It would show where the light is.
But it wouldn't specify...
It doesn't say exactly.
The height.
The height.
As far as the landscape, I mean, this is as good as we can do, as far as what we can require on the buffering.
We, yes.
Okay, cuz I mean, that's the biggest thing we get on these gas stations, is, you know, you've got the canopy there, you've got the building there, and of course, the gas station wants bright colors and as much visibility as possible, and we get yelled at to not look like Airport Boulevard or Highway fifty-nine on Foley and...
And we've got the live oaks.
Crapville or Montgomery anywhere, so...
And then the landscape buffering, you know, screening every parking area.
All right.
Yes, we had the red lines, I've already sent that to the landscape architect, move the trees so that they meet that additional buffering at the dumpster enclosure, so they're gonna make those revisions for staff comment.
All right, no other questions for the applicant? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Are you saying, is this not a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
All right, not a public hearing, but would anybody like to speak to this item, anyway? I always like to give people a chance.
That's fair enough.
All right. I will not close, since it's not a public hearing, but please do put on record that we did allow people to speak if they wanted to. Commissioners? Hunter has asked, and part of a motion, that we include the light poles at ten feet to memorialize that item?
I move we approve case SR twenty-three point zero-four with staff recommendations and a fourth recommendation to have the lighting poles meet the ten-foot ordinance requirement.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendation, as well as a fourth item requiring lights be ten feet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that's a recommendation to approve, cuz this does go to the city council?
Correct, yes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD twenty-three fifteen, Publix at point clear.
Okay, couple of pretty easy ones. These, this is a final MOP approval of the public site that's already built. Anything over two, three, two units, we would have to come back and get this approval, but, you know, one tenant can use a piece of property, so, as you know, that store's been open for a little bit, and we approved, we had substantial completion letter from the engineer, we've inspected, all our utilities are inspected. So the store's open, there was a couple of punch list items, mainly landscape, that were needed to get done, and those have been done. So we're here in front of you just to close this one out, as the final approval. I'm gonna kinda flip through the images, you've seen them all, and this one's kinda, you can go see what it looks like instead of wondering what plans are gonna be. This will move in forward so that other tenants can open in those tenant spaces, the lots are, out parcels are already created, so they can move forward with those. There's really not a whole lot to discuss on this one. I do, you know, commend a lot of the thought that went in this, to have a dog park right there by the, and a park. I hope that we can work together with the county, and if you see right here, the park created, they also installed sidewalks. This property and this was not a part of this project, but I hope we can work to make a connection from this sidewalk to the north, to the north, or to the west, and get connected to Old Battle's Place and Old Battle's Village, and let people walk and bike to this. That's gonna be a little bit, there's some challenges there, but I hope we can do that in the future.
Hunter, if you'll go back just to that. I tell ya, in hindsight, that one connection, and I just say this not for this at all, I think this, Trey, I think y'all did a great job on this, and it's really nice. I drive from the workout room by that to my house, so for the first two weeks, I was there just about, maybe twice a day, don't make fun of me, Clarice, she would see me there. But now I'm down to about, you know, three times a week, so I'm not, I don't break out on highs, but I don't go there. But the connection right there, close, when we have another one like this, you know, that connection close to Grino on Battle's Road is probably not necessary and just a lot more pervious, a lot more pervious.
Here?
Yeah. I mean, I believe in that, you know, connectivity, and that's one of our big tenants, but that doesn't really offer anything. If you're taking a right, you can go out the back way anyway, and if you're taking a left, you're awfully close to that intersection, it's just a lot more asphalt. In the future, maybe when this shopping center gets filled out and there are more buildings built in, you know, it might show necessary, but, you know, in the future, you know, as much as we want connectivity, we don't necessarily need a redundancy, I think, a lot of times.
And, you know, there are limits on that one, you can relieve yourself, because remember, this one didn't come to you, it's a subdivision. This is a replat, so you can not be accountable for that one.
But just saying, when somebody turns, you know, makes that right onto Battle's on two wheels going pretty fast...
It's too close to the intersection.
And somebody takes a left, it's just, you know, those are the kind of wrecks you get killed in, cuz you get T-boned riding, you know, you have a pickup truck hit somebody in a low sedan, and that bumper's just at a, you know, perfectly bad height, but that probably shouldn't be there. But other than that, I mean, it's fantastic.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that, I think that's a great point, and, you know, hindsight, I think, you know, we do have a residential property still right in the middle of there that didn't allow that to move forward, or move to the west any, but I think the result's pretty clear that it is, and it puts a little hamper on what can be done on this property. So, but with that said, this has to be recorded, we're gonna work with Jade to get that done, we've only had a couple of those recorded, so the plan you see, I think the one that was labeled general layout plan is the one we'll work with and get that approved, and then there will be a maintenance bond and maintenance and guarantee agreement for only the water and sewer on this one. So we'll get those, but this, those will go to the city council for adoption or acceptance resolution to take on those, and then there'll be a two-year maintenance window.
Is that Riviera?
No, that'll be us, that is the city, it's water and sewer.
I meant for electricity, is that Riviera, Baldwin MC?
You remember, that was Riviera.
All right.
So those are the only conditions that we had, I'm sorry, that was the follow-up activities, the two conditions that we do that, and then, it's already in the replat. As a note, I just wanna memorialize his approval of this MOP, that the park area that was formerly Lot Seven, that's that on Battle's Road, the use shall be restricted to green space park use only unless they come back through processes to change that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Hunter.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Hunter? All right, thank you. Trey, anything to add at this time? This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time, anybody wish to speak to this item? Talk about the new Publix on Grino, that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion to accept staff's approval of SD twenty-three fifteen.
A motion to approve subject to the staff recommendation, right? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All who would like to approve subject to staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is, if I'm correct, Hilltop Phase Two.
Okay, another one I'm gonna move through pretty quickly, this is the Phase Two that was eight lots, there was a couple of punch list items we're comfortable with, did wanna point out the clarification, because some of the, why some of the trees weren't installed. During this process, the plan on the left was the drainage area and the plans that were submitted to us at preliminary plat. The request was to use the plan on the right, and we looked at that as, it's a better landscape plan. So absolutely, we did approve that administratively, felt that met the intentions of our rules and ordinances much better. We didn't remove, or did not intend to remove the street trees on the perimeter, so those are being installed, I believe, this, the fifth? Yeah, so this week, and we will get that, but everything else has been met, obviously the follow-up activities, you know, will have to be recorded, and O and M will be recorded. There was a note that I struck through in the condition three, the engineer's signature block wasn't included on the final plat, it is now, so we do recommend approval of this final plat with two conditions, installation of the remaining punch list items, and then complete the follow-up activities, to ensure that's reported.
Thank you, Hunter. Any questions for Hunter at this time? Just, anything to add to this, Trey? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move we approve SD twenty-three point one-six, Hilltop Phase Two final plat, subject to staff recommendations with number three, already having that top.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendations, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take that, that case, we've got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, ZC twenty-three oh-three, under old and new business, amendment to Fairhope's zoning requirement. Hunter?
And, hey, Rebecca's not here tonight, thank you. She came in and we did meet with, about some things, and we have debated building heights in the CBDs forever, and we have one line, all buildings shall be below forty feet and three stories. We need some better language in there, and we need better instructions. I don't, I'm not, I'm not here to tell people what paint, you know, color paint to put their build, but we need better instructions for the architects and the owners of those properties, so they're not wasting time and spending six months designing something, then coming and figuring out, oh, yeah, we meant everything when we said forty feet. So looking at what tools are out there, form-based codes are the, you know, the way to go, in our opinion. We have them, the example on the right is Table four-two from our current zoning ordinance, talks about frontage types. So we have form-based codes, there's nothing to be afraid of, it's not telling people what colors to paint their buildings. There's examples all over the place, and, you know, I'm kinda here to discuss what to do here, because we're drafting some of these, and we're, we've looked at some examples, and just kinda show you, it's not, it's not creating new regulations, it's better clarifying what we're actually wanting to see. So there's maximum height limits, and where to put parapet walls, and, you know, some of those items. But when we got looking at this, this kinda became, this is why I'm here in front of you, because before I waste time, we've gotta draw a lot, it's graphics-heavy. So before we do all this, you know, I want to get some feedback, because my, I wasn't here when we upped the height limit to forty feet, but I have heard from multiple people that why we did that was because the architects wanted that so we could have pitched roofs and architectural detail, give them that extra bit of room. And what we've gotten since then has been flat boxes. So as we provide clear descriptions and instructions for what our intent is, there's a, there's a, do we do what we're using now to see that, or do we backtrack? Do we say, our intent was, if you're doing pitched roofs and things like that, you can go to the forty feet, but if you're doing a flat roof, hey, limited to stories, you know?
Or you have to utilize that top floor to something for the public to utilize, like some, something...
There's certainly, this, so this is, this is the graphics that I'm kinda just, there'll have to be a lot more included with this, but the blue line is the forty feet. So as just an example, if we were to say, you know, with, by the time you get your floors in, you know, the roof deck of a, of a flat roof building is limited to two stories, and roof deck's thirty-two feet. That allows room for a parapet wall, and eight-foot for elevator shaft, and the things you need to access that rooftop. We could carry on what we have now in the rooftop terrace, and maybe twenty-five percent of that roof could be covered with buildings higher than that. But, but the logic there is, we're limiting it to two stories, that's a big monumental change. And the one thing, if we do go through with this, we can't punish people that are already have plans in, okay? We've gotta give people some grace. I've talked to many projects that have this, so there's a lot of people that have invested in property and already have plans in the pipeline. But I think long-term, if this is our intent, and what we intended with our ordinance, then we should be clear on what that is. Now, there is, the other two, I think it, cuz right now, we're incentivizing the flat roofs. People are actually punished if they have to bring the peak of their building lower than forty feet. They lose square footage. So I think this would incentivize the pitched roofs, and then there's a question, the two images on the right, do we say, continue with everything stays under forty feet? I think that's clear, I don't wanna, I think it creates more confusion if we were tried to change that, but it is an option, depending on what you wanna see. There's some heights there that, for floors, that give you a little bit of a, an idea, you know, at twelve-foot first floor, ten-foot and nine-foot, gives enough room to have everything under forty feet and still provide some architectural detail. You know, if we're catering to the fifteen-foot height, you know, ceilings, it's hard, it's hard to squeeze that under forty feet, so...
Well, you know, I think listening to professionals say, you know, we tried our best when we did this, we had, you know, architect after architect say, you know, we can't use our creativity with the, you know, blah, 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 you gotta go to forty feet. And, you know, everything's gonna be flat, everything's flat now, and we've gotta use our creativity, and if you give us forty feet, we can be so creative. And the architect that, you know, bitched at us the most, excuse the French, has proposed three buildings since then, and all three are forty-foot with flat roofs. And I mean, you know, my question is, why do you even need an architect? If you're gonna do forty feet with a flat roof, light line to light line, I mean, I can draw a box, it's not real good, but I can get a ruler, and after a while, I can draw a square or a rectangular box, and I can cover it light line to light line to height, and, you know, we tried, we listened, and they have not delivered. And I'm disappointed with that, you know, quite frankly, you know, hoping to get, you know, look at John Bathe's building, you know, very attractive, and one of the most attractive buildings is over the forty-foot height, the building he's got over on, you know, that goes from Delamar to to Fairhope Avenue. But some of the buildings now, and, you know, you understand with building costs getting where they are now, and property costs getting where they are, and, you know, trying to get your return on a building, I mean, it's, you gotta have some guts to do a building project right now with interest rates increasing. But with that said, I don't see where we would hurt people if we said two stories, you know, if you got a flat roof, then you get two stories, period. If you want the third story, you've gotta have some architectural, you know, you know, incentivize it architecturally, I don't see where that would hurt people at all, and you would, you know, even if you gave them two feet or three feet, or took a foot away, I mean, you know, when you look at, you know, twelve feet, ten feet, nine feet, that's a pretty good height options right there.
I agree, I mean, I think it, what it did is move the needle. I mean, it moved it from, okay, now we can get three stories in, but we're so close to having that fourth floor, or every, the roof deck... to having that fourth floor, or every, the roof deck is hitting forty feet and.
And we want a roof deck and then can we cover the roof deck and we can do this? What do you think, Holly? You've been on here long enough and.
I think that we've missed a great opportunity with demanding what we should have instead of what we allowed. So I am all about the fifteen-foot first floor. I feel like that has a classic grandness. If you're in a, a bottom floor with ceilings like that, twelve is like nineteen seventy-five, eight-foot ceilings nowadays. Like that's, times are changing. I think we need to expect more and, and present that this is what we want.
And let me, let me clarify real quick because these are examples.
Right.
Not what we would do, but just, just as an example, you know, what, what this would look like would give a lot of freedom, you know, it, but it just has a minimum and maximum. So, you know, twelve, you know, it's twelve to eighteen foot. So people can flex. If they want an eight-foot third floor and take it out of here, we're, I don't want to intend for us to be so hard, every floor has to be this. Every step during this gives people flexibility to do the one. It just sets the upper and lower limits. So, but, but that was a good point to, to kind of bring out.
Well, I think if we can build anything that has some kind of integrity of something that looks older or historic, they're going to have those high ceilings. Everything you think, see in Mobile, any of their downtown businesses or New Orleans, they don't have ten-foot ceilings. They're going to have a, a larger ceiling height. So I feel like if we can be implementing what other cities across the nation that are our size, that are growing like we are, I use Franklin a lot, Franklin, Tennessee is a sister city that look of what, how they're holding on to the integrity of their town, but growing progressively. And they're utilizing their space well.
And some of the, you know, that's not on the, the graphics tonight, you know, we have right now, build the building to the front building line. You know, some of these things are, we'll give people five feet of room. So if they want outdoor, you know, sitting area for a restaurant or, or, you know, there's some, there's some play there. If they want to move back four feet and have an eight-foot balcony, they can do that, but only four feet can come over our public right of way now. So that gives them flexibility.
Do you want me to put my devil's advocate hat back on?
Absolutely.
All right.
That's why you're here.
Looking at, at graphic one, where we're talking about fourteen or fifteen-foot interior heights and it's showing it stopping at two floors. I am not comfortable with us dictating to a designer what, if, if the rule is forty feet to a flat roof and they want to put three stories in that and meet that.
That's what it is today.
Right, I understand.
This would change it. Two stories.
It would not change it or it, it would limit it to two stories.
Well, it would change the rule. I mean, this would be something that.
Completely different rule.
It would potentially change the height limit depending on what type of structure you're looking at, particularly in the CBD.
Because see, the other thing that comes up and like on the flat roofs, and you and I've talked about it, parapets and, and I know, I'm kind of the old man of the mountain here. I've kind of been around a long time and seen how this has progressed through different folks. You know, like a four-foot parapet, to a large degree, that is a code requirement because when you've got roof-mounted equipment, you have to have a protection system, whether that be a railing or a parapet, all the way around that roof so that if you've got service techs up there, they're protected from the edge of the roof. So, and you also, depending on what it is, townhomes have a required parapet wall that has to come up for fire separation. So, and I know we've talked about whether that's an architectural feature, you see it as an architectural feature and I, I get that. I see it as a code requirement. So that's where we get into the railings versus the parapets versus, you know, the one that really got us was the, the rooftop, the rooftop house with now the exit coming off the top because for, if you have a rooftop area, you have got to have a fully enclosed stair leading to the ground from that floor, which then is going to, you know, by default give you an eight-foot tall building with an exit stair that goes all the way down. So now you're building forty feet with a rooftop terrace and now you've got an eight-foot building on top of it, an eight-foot room extension.
And there's no doubt some of those will be there if this is, again, this, any of this change would have to go through.
Right.
Planning commission, full public hearings and ultimately to city council. But Eric is absolutely right. Building code requires safety and, you know, there, if somebody's got to work on roof equipment, but.
They're doing it all over the place.
That, that parapet wall can be a safety device and an architectural feature.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
And what we define here, and what I do like about some of these, it, it gives the designers the instructions they need. I, I don't suspect there'll be too many going and looking at these form-based codes for fun, but it gives the handbook for the architects trying to do this. So if you look at this one, it says, you know, this, in this particular area, it was thirty-six feet to the eaves or, so the roof deck.
Right.
And then four-foot for your parapet wall.
And then four-foot, your parapet wall.
So it gives the, it gives them the, the guidance needed on the front end.
So what I want to verify though, that's a three-story structure with a parapet wall. That will be, still be allowed if an owner or an architect chooses to design that building and submit.
No, that was somebody else's regulations. This is the question we're proposing today because the intent I have heard from everybody when we made that allowance was to do pitched roofs and kind of incentivize the third floor. We kind of kept, went with the keep it simple, stupid approach and just had one line, all structures are below forty feet.
And there was a lot of discussion on that. We just came up with, let's just do it, you know, forty feet, have it flat, like he said, his system, because we'd had so much push from architects. I'm not, you know, it sounds like I'm knocking the architects. I'm sure the architects are just doing what their clients are asking them to, just here's the property cost and Fairhope, let's maximize every square inch we have and, and get as much as we can. You know, let's put our water meters on the sidewalks and our electrical services in the right of way and, and, you know, and have, you know, eight parking spaces for a forty-unit apartment, you know? I mean, it, it's, you know, I don't blame them, you know, I.
But that's what our zoning codes are, are there to do, to instruct what our intent is.
But I think what we're doing here, Eric, this, what I see this as is, okay, if we're going to do a flat roof, you only get two stories. Therefore, you're incentivizing the architects to be able to work with their folks and say, hey, you want that third story? Here are some options that we can do that meet the requirement that allow, you know, hopefully a win-win, one for the developer to get that third story he so desperately needs to meet the, you know, cost requirement, and number two, for the city to get a little bit more attractive building that, you know, in thirty years will not look like I designed it.
But I did consider that, where that height is on the, that two-story building, there's exactly enough room to put the elevator shafts and.
And, and so like that would be allowed if they wanted to do a rooftop terrace?
Yeah.
The two stories with a rooftop terrace and everything under forty feet.
And we can even, this is kind of the initial feedback, but we can take the stuff with a rooftop terrace and say, all right, you can have this two-story building. We might even include twenty-five, forty percent can have a third floor, but it's got to be under this height and, and for a roof to support a rooftop terrace. I mean, that's, that's options we can do.
Where you have the peaked roof up front and something flat on the back or vice versa, it just.
You can have a facade in the front.
It just changes.
I mean, the, the peaks here create all kind of good solutions because that can be moved to the back. It gives the architect, there's a win-win here for everything.
It helps with gutters, beautiful gutters coming off of it.
How tall is that middle example? How high is that peak going to be?
So this one here is right at the forty feet.
I understand that, but the other one?
This one, I believe, in CAD was forty-six, forty-five and some change, so forty-six feet.
Is that going to be part, if, if that is decided, is that going to be part of the ordinance or are they just going to be able to put up whatever they want?
I have to make a stance, John. So if, if it's Hunter Simmons choosing what he's going to propose and I got to draw the graphics, I'm going to bring this and this to you, keeping everything under forty feet.
Can I?
I'm biased.
Okay.
Because I have to enforce this.
Well, for years and years, the measurement for building height was to the uppermost ridge. And that's when I started with the city in two thousand, all the way to four or five years ago, we, the building code measures building height from ridge to eve midpoint, which is what that center graphic is showing. That is showing essentially the building code definition of what is the building, of what is the roof height. And so you get that additional up above. And I know we changed that definition from ultimate ridge to midpoint.
All over.
Four or five years ago.
Couple of years before I got here.
Yeah, it was, it was four or five years ago because, you know, that's, it was just very atypical. I don't know if we found any other jurisdictions or any other groups that actually defined roof height to the uppermost ridge. It was all to essentially what the building code says, midpoint of the ridge.
There's, there's actually a lot of people that do upper caps on it.
Okay.
You know, where, where we kind of got askew, I think more was how you define the base. You know, average, average lot elevation, you know, before you move any dirt is a hard thing to do on some properties and we didn't account for, we talked about it, you know, Van Anther, we had a project.
And that's what we could allow a nine-foot tall building.
Right, right. And, and what I would incorporate with, what I, wherever, with some direction, I would propose in the CBD at least, we have some very clear heights that start at the sidewall on, on a, you know, and, and we measure to, I, I would suggest the peak on, in the CBD so we're kind of consistent. But that's, that's certainly debatable and if we go to mean or just say whatever it is, that's easier to measure on the planning phase and we can view, review plans a little easier. But I am open to suggestions of how we do that.
Well, the only question, if we do this in CBD, does that by default change the overall measurement of roof heights throughout the zoning ordinance?
No.
It would be strictly the CBD?
And, and it is today in the CBD. It's the same thing we're doing right now. We don't use average elevation in the CBD.
Right.
Because the way we define, now what we need to do, in addition to this, it's on our, our to-do list, is better clarify building height in other areas and what to do. You know, if you're on a twenty-acre property that has, you know, thirty feet of elevation, well, that doesn't mean you can build a five-foot building all the way across. It can't mean that. But that's kind of what our ordinance says right now.
Right.
So in those unique situations like Van Anther, we need, okay, here's A that is going to cover ninety percent of the properties. For those other unique properties, we need to have some solutions. That's, that's on our to-do list. But CBD, I think is, I don't think we necessarily change anything except for where we measure on the ground, how we measure that. And, and you've got one coming to you that just went through board of adjustment. We're, we're going to ask for that. We're going to ask for, because the, the property does slope, we're going to ask, just like I did for Van Anther, that we measure from each building footprint. There's seven or eight buildings and so instead, it, it works better with, with the topography of the site and I think gives a better streetscape. So this could certainly help us in that regard. But Kevin, you got any? I don't know.
I'm good with one and three.
One and three?
I think I would continue to, to get a, a group of architects that you're, and get their opinion on what, what they've been working on, what they see. I think Rebecca's a great resource, I think. And then present something to us on what you see. But I, I know that that has helped in the past when we had those work groups of contractors and developers and we, then they know what you're clearly defining and why.
I think, and right now it's hard for anybody in that field to get up, I mean, everybody's so busy, but we certainly, and I appreciate Rebecca's time doing that, and I will get this in front of some other local hearts when we get to a little bit more because where I really want some, Eric, what also this, this will entail, it even describes what pitches to use and, you know, so somebody just doesn't come in with a one-degree pitch and call it a pitched roof. You know, there, there's some tricks there that we're going to be, you know, pretty clear on, on what to do. So any, I got a, I got a vote from John. I won't call it a vote. I got his, his support on one and three.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning like John is right now, but on the other hand, you know, like Holly says, if, if we get a lot of, you know, folks, you know, the professionals come in and say, hey, you know, look, forty-two feet makes an exact, you know, is the exact size because then you can do this and this and this, even though there may not be an exact size. Lots are bigger and narrower, but.
I need some definition for what, what two is, what that two is going to be.
Right. And, and that's, you know, as, I'm a little selfish here. Before we go and, and draw a bunch of stuff, you know, this is where it gets. Now certainly we'll work through the process if it changes. We'll go back to the drawing board and redraw as many times as we need to. But, you know, conceptually, limiting flat roofs to two, two stories is kind of a reverse. You know, we're, we're pulling a reversal, folks. And, and again, it can affect, I don't think it can affect any. And I would suggest if we do make this amendment, we give it a couple of months to become effective and let, you know, if, if there are some folks out there that have bought a piece of property and have the plan, they get a chance to bring that, bring that to the city and, and do this. I don't want to, I mean, I think it's the best choice, but I don't want to infringe on somebody.
It would hurt somebody in the short run, especially alone with that.
Okay. I'll just let you, I'm going to think about, I'd like to get with you and talk about it. I am not initially comfortable telling someone who builds a flat roof, they can only build two stories.
I, I agree. I agree on that.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with, and you and I've had this discussion. I'll see what, what y'all think. I, I think we need to be careful about getting into the realm of architecturally dictating our architectural review. I, I mean, if we, if the council wants to give us that authority, that's great. I just want to be, I, I get real kind of twitchy when we start kind of dictating designs to people for their buildings.
And, and Eric and I have debated this.
We have debated this.
I'll tell you, nineteen oh nine.
Let me, let me jump in real quick though. I, I think there's, you know, a number of ways to skin the cat. And, and I think here's another issue is you don't say a thing about how many stories you get. It's just if you've got a flat roof, you get thirty-four feet. And you can have three stories if you get eight-foot ceilings and do it. But flat roof, you get thirty-four, that what we're worried about is just the scale. Do we want a city with every single building that's built from here on out, other than what John Batte does, forty feet with flat roofs? And how is that going to make Fairhope look in the long run versus, you know, what we've had so far has been pretty eclectic. We've got some flat roofs and peaked roofs and everything, you know, mixed in and that seems to be a lot more attractive.
There's some logic to limit it to stories and where the, you'll also appreciate some other conversations. There, when you see some of these codes, especially in downtowns, a lot of them, there is a minimum height of a first floor of twelve feet because that gives enough room when people put awnings and things like that on the front of those buildings, it gives them enough height to get it out of the headspace of people walking up and down the street. So, you know, you're mandating that the ground floor is this, well, then you, you can't squeeze three in. You don't, you know, you, you just can't do it if it's thirty-two feet. And, and the bottom floors, you know, it's not physically, so you're physically possible. So that, that's, that's why, but you can, I mean, that's, you can do it based on height or whatever, it's what, what the intent is.
When I see that it's only applicable for the CBD and I think of what downtown Fairhope, the majority of our time when we have parades and Mardi Gras and this and that, the lack of use of these flat-top roofs that where, you know, it could be, it could be a great place to utilize a flat-top roof for those events much more than just watching sunsets. I know I love to go to the top of the library and look across and it's amazing, but I don't, I don't understand why we would have and approve something that's flat-roofed going forward if we're not going to utilize that space just to do a cheap flat roof.
Well, and, and, you know, I do kind of lean on Eric's side a little bit here. I don't want to mandate everybody has the rooftop.
Well, you can't tell somebody they don't have good taste.
Well, I mean, we're.
I can do that.
Yeah. But the allowance is certainly there.
I don't think it's as much the taste as.
I, I, it's not taste to me, it's like utilizing the space. It's utilizing the space, maximizing.
I think it's trying to maximize every possible square footage you can.
Exactly.
And, you know, that's what we see here all the time. And, I mean, that's the whole reason for planning. I mean, we do this same principle all the time, when we say you have to have green space in a subdivision.
Yeah.
And you've gotta have sidewalks in a subdivision. You know, basically limiting how much they put in there, maximizing, you know, what they put into, you know, per acre.
And we're, we're dictating the form of buildings, but not architectural views, where we're telling people what materials to use and, and what kinda wrought iron to, it's not historically accurate wrought iron. You know, that's, that's the difference between these form-based codes and the architectural standards that you typically see in, when there is an architectural review board and things like that.
That's okay. You're the, you're the creative guy. I'm the nuts and bolts guy. You need to sell me on it.
Yeah, that's right. No, I gotta sell them on it.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, do what happens.